John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington. Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have before you the minutes of August 12th, which will stand approved as submitted. Was there any objections? Seeing none. Okay, before we start the agenda of the meeting, we have two folks who signed up to speak to us for three minutes. Mr. Farmer, you're on the list first this time.
Good evening, Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. Last fall, I spoke with staff down at Unity Park during one of the open sessions. And during that discussion, it was very good. He said to me, he goes, well, Joe, if you really feel that way, why don't you just apply for the Board of Zoning Appeals? And I said, well, I have for the past four years. And he said, well, I don't remember seeing your application. And I thought, huh. I hit send on the computer. I don't know. Maybe went to the wrong cloud. So tonight, I'd like to notify you that I have a Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, I know that we have two openings this year. One of which is someone who was appointed in January to fill an expired term. And one of which I anticipate not reapply for another term. I want that opening. And here's why I want it. For 32 years, I've lived in my current location. That property is the only property that I own. I have no employer and I'm employed by no one. I have no conflicts of interest. We've done a better job over the last year of eliminating some of these conflicts. We need to continue on that path. I have attended more meetings of the Board of Zoning Appeals than anyone, including the current members. And anytime I've spoken with them, 100% of the time, I've spoken in favor of the city ordinance. As we look forward to renewing, redoing, making some modifications to this developer code, I think we need to abide by it. Our old code was partially in a mess because of what this board did over the last 12 years. If we need to make modifications, they need to be done through the code and through this board. If there are some very unique exceptions, that's when the Board of Zoning Appeals needs to take a look at that specific exception. But not just worldly because some developer wants it. So in your deliberations over the next couple of months, I want you to know I would like to be on this Board of Zoning Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thornton.
Clarence Thornton, Minister Clarence Thornton, reside at 114 Dorfett Street, Greenville, South Carolina. I'm going to be here to talk about racial displacement in the city of Greenville. Minority citizens were asked to move out of their neighborhoods so they could fix up and repair their neighborhoods. Neighborhoods that have been neglected, neighborhoods that didn't receive adequate care from their city. They were often neglected because the funding would not go to the poor but to the privileged. We have here today that minority neighborhoods are second thought. They are still treated like second-class citizens. The old adage is you are black, you are the first fired and the last heard. We long live that dark history and we still see the double standard in our city as this city operates. We call gentrification diversity. No, gentrification is that, gentrification. Look at the neighborhoods. All the citizens, children, neighborhoods, family, friends, cousins, relatives, they ask to move all their neighborhoods. Freezing like nomads, beg to wonder how to find new friends and family. Their entire life uprooted. What goes a tree if a tree have no roots? Our history annihilated, our culture obliterated, our communications stifled. Years of friendship destroyed, yet this is okay. The promise is broken, but there's nothing new. It gets a part of American life and African-American history that goes back as long as slavery, uprooted, children sold, families broken up. Gentrification is the same system. A system used to keep people oppressed, suppressed and repressed. A tactic used to divide, to break up. When I look at our history, I realize our history has been destroyed. Our village has been destroyed. Apart from the former study, this gentrification was one of the worst in the southeast in the city of Greenville. The equity of the rich compared to the poor is one of the worst in the southeast. I also go back and look at West Greenville. Bayou, Sterling, Haynes Street, Shakora and Sullivan, and probably other neighborhoods, Dunbar, Nicker Town. I realize that all those neighborhoods have been displaced. The average majority, if you were to ask the average minority, they feel like they're not even wanted in the city of Greenville. They feel like nobody cares about them. They feel like nobody wants them in this city. They say this city is for the rich and it's not for the poor. Again, we get pushed down, oppressed and suppressed. This city, I feel, say we're going to work on affordable housing, but it's a joke. It's an effort for the average median income to be increased in the city of West Greenville, in our city of West Greenville. We call it a little city there. And if you notice, we have maybe like 500 people at our West Greenville reunion. And we ask the question, why do we have to have a reunion? Because we no longer have a neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, we have a few folks who have a presentation for tonight. Ms. Manager, do you want to introduce these people? We have two presentations.
Yes, sir. First, we'll have our President and CEO, Brandon Gaffney, who represents New Horizon Family Health Services. I think that he met Councilmember Fleming not long ago, and she asked if he could come and give a short presentation to City Council on the great work that they're doing, and we're happy to have you this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Management. It's only be fitting that I come before you today because I am actually new to the area. So I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Brandon Gaffney. I'm the President and CEO of New Horizon Family Health Services Incorporated here in Greenville. A little background about myself, I was raised in Columbia, South Carolina. I'm a product of the Kristen School District One Public Schools. I did my undergraduate work at Morehouse College in Atlanta and received my Master of Medical University of South Carolina. I've been in healthcare management about 23 years. 16 of those years were in leadership roles, senior leadership roles. Chief Operating Officer while at Beaufort at a community health center, very similar to New Horizon, and CEO of a community health center in Savannah, Georgia, very much like New Horizon. I most recently come as my family moved to the upstate as Executive Director of Spartanburg Area Medical Health Center. But I took over upon Mrs. Mitchell's retirement in July of this year, so I'm still fresh and very new. But I'm honored to be before you this evening as to basically introduce myself and give homage to my predecessor, Ms. Regina Mitchell, who worked tirelessly to create an environment of collaboration, inclusion, and provide services to the citizens of Greenville. As such, my goal is to build upon the rich legacy that she and the board members have done over the last 26 years to create new and innovative ways so that patients can come into New Horizon and receive quality care they need to receive. Some quick facts. We actually have about just under 19,000 patients, 18,909 to be exact. We have 236 employees, and we have a budget of just around $30 million. We have services of family medicine, internal medicine, dental, behavioral health, pharmacy services. We provide healthcare for the homeless, and we also provide a respite program with Miracle Hill Mission here in Greenville. We have sites in all throughout Greenville, in the county and in the city. We have two in the city, our Mallard Street location, which is mostly administrative now, but our healthcare for the homeless and mobile medical teams work out of that, and our main site, which is off West Ferris. But I want to give you some great news that we received today, so you're going to find out before my board actually finds out. We received notification from HERSA. And HERSA, Health Services Resource Administration, is how we get our federal funding. And we were awarded a top-tier health center for this country. What does that mean? You know, 1,393 health centers in this country, and New Horizon is one of the top ones in this country. So I thank you. I said it would be quick. I just wanted to introduce myself. In the future, I plan to come back before you and talk about the great things that we're providing. Are there any questions?
No, I just want to say that I met him, Mr. Gaffney. But the New Horizon Health Services, Mr. Mitchell was there 26 years when my mother and a lot of other neighborhood people begged for a health center, and we got this one. She's been the director, she just retired. But I met him coming in, and this is great news because, like he said, they have homeless. A lot of people don't even know, they even have a van that goes from neighborhood to neighborhood. And I wanted you to know because it's a place that we, as councilmembers, can refer to when people ask us, when people need help, healthcare, et cetera, they can go to New Horizon. So I thank you so much, and I appreciate your spirit. I appreciate your wife dragging you all the way to Greenville. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just say this too, you guys do a great job of providing healthcare services to Glorian County people. If I recall, I think you guys do like a graduated payment system based upon income.
Very good.
So if, you know, if somebody in the community doesn't have health insurance or has, you know, lower funds, they can go to New Horizon and still get care. You guys are right by the mental health facility. So that's where people who, you know, need to be referred over there or need to come back and forth, you can do that. I mean, I think you guys are a great asset to our community, and I really appreciate the work you guys do.
Thank you, and it's truly an honor to be here and represent it before you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. And you don't have to stay for the meeting, trust me, but I was asking. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next presentation this evening is from the CEO of United Housing Connections, Candace Timmerman. Candace is the new CEO. It's been about six?
January.
January. Time flies when you're having fun. And we heard a longer presentation from them during the work session, but for our general public who may not have had an opportunity to tune into that, they're going to give a shortened presentation this evening just on the role and the work that they're doing here in the upstate. So Candace?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for having me here today. Like Shannon said, I'm Candace Timmerman, CEO of United Housing Connections. I'm going to give you an update on who we are and what we're doing. So our mission is to connect people at risk or currently experiencing homelessness with safe, sustainable, and affordable homes. We envision an upstate where all people have the opportunity to live in safe, sustainable, and affordable housing. We, our vision is to create a system that makes homelessness brief, rare, and nonrecurring. So we have four divisions at United Housing Connections. We are the lead agency of the continuum of care. We have affordable housing. We have 369 opportunities of affordable housing that we own. We also have permanent supportive housing programs. So we have permanent supportive for those who are chronically homeless and living with a disability. And then we also have housing programs that offer a subsidy to families who are homeless and with school-aged children in Greenville County School District. And we have our street outreach team where that is funded by the City of Greenville. Thank you all so much. And that is where we make contact with our friends who are experiencing homelessness, literal homelessness on the street, or, you know, encampments, abandoned buildings, and offer them services and connect them with housing, employment, disability, income, transportation, et cetera. So in 2024, on one night, we look at a snapshot of homelessness. So we get together with volunteers throughout Greenville, and we conduct a homeless point-in-time count on one night. So on that one night, we had, there were 725 people who were experiencing homelessness. So that meant they were either in emergency shelter or transitional housing program paid for by an agency that offered temporary housing and services, or they were unsheltered, living in a place not meant for human habitation, like a vehicle, abandoned building, woods, street. You can see there were 169 of those who are chronically homeless, 333 disabling condition, 66 veterans, and 130 survivors of domestic violence. What you don't see is 155 of those that are unsheltered. Okay? So this is our housing inventory count on that night. There were available, Safe Haven is kind of like a shelter, but it is a housing type that we don't have any longer, but that is for those suffering with a mental illness. And emergency shelter, that includes Miracle Hills Shelter Beds, Salvation Army Shelter Beds, and transitional housing programs. That means facilitated by an agency. So those emergency shelter transitional and Safe Haven are counted in our homeless point-in-time count numbers also. Okay? So continuum of care, we are the lead agency of that continuum, the upstate continuum of care. I'll tell you what that is shortly. It's a lot of different homeless service providers, many of those in Greenville. And we apply for the federal funds collectively, and we operate the homeless management information systems where we can, you know, track the history and progress of those participating in our homeless response system. Okay, so outreach. We have our outreach team. Thomas Wood is our lead outreach, he's here today. We're so grateful for him and his team. And they provide transportation services, you know, transport to the DMV to help obtain documents like birth certificates, ID cards, housing options. They are able to connect people not only with permanent supportive housing, but with shared housing, boarding houses, all types of different opportunities, and make referrals to detox, mental health, the VA assistance programs, and even shelter, and provide case management to those who are in encampments and on the streets of Greenville. So year-to-date, we served with our outreach team 92 men, 16 women, 33 veterans, and provided 352 services. So now we are doing something, we have an initiative called Functional Zero. And this is, there is a federal benchmark that looks at different types of measures. For example, there would be more veterans exiting the homeless response system into permanent housing that were coming into the system. And the time that once they had been identified for a permanent supportive housing program is diminished so that it's not taking as much time to get them into housing. Basically, that the community has a, you know, solidified response so that homelessness can be brief, rare, and nonrecurring truly. Okay? We also offer permanent supportive housing. Our next endeavor has been Church Street Place. Many of you have heard of that. It is 36 units of permanent supportive housing. And it is single-room occupancy, and we work with other service providers in the community like VA, Mental Health, Triune Mercy, United Mysteries, Salvation Army, and Miracle Hill to provide the services, wraparound services, so that we can, you know, make successful community. So, yep. Okay, and I'll take any questions now.
Okay.
Well, thank you. We had a good session with you this afternoon. Thank you for, it was lively as well as informative.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. With that, we proceed to our consent agenda. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell Stahl. Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you. Regular agenda, 15A.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.03 acre of real property and 0.03 acre of adjacent right-of-way located on Hartzell Street and to provide the zoning designation of RNA Neighborhood A District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions, Ms. Mayor Douglas? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. See his first reading, 15B.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.23 acre of real property and 0.11 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 143D Street and to provide the zoning designation of RHD House D District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions, Ms. Mayor Douglas? Not, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.38 acre of real property and 0.04 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 6 and 8 Shepherd Drive and to provide the zoning designation of RHC House C District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15D.
An ordinance to enter into a development agreement between the City of Greenville and Three Falls LLC for the design and construction of public improvements along Falls Street and East McBee Avenue and to appropriate 650,000 in additional funding from the Economic Development Project in the Capital Projects Fund project.
So moved, second.
Motion, second. Mr. Conderson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Greenville City Economic Development Corporation, with much direct support from our city's Engineering Services Department, would like to present the facts and merits regarding the proposed public-private partnership and development agreement that the city is being requested to enter by and between Three Falls LLC, South Carolina Limited Liability Company, the developer and the city of Greenville. This public-private partnership and the associated project was discussed in depth with council during the August 12th work session, whereas the developer owns the real property located at 300 East McBee Avenue in the city of Greenville, South Carolina, and the 300 East McBee project is part of the North Broad District, a vital location in the central business district and is a 163,157-square-foot Class A office building that will serve as the corporate headquarters for Prisma Health, along with new office and retail tenants, including store, restaurant, and several other strategically targeted businesses, including banking, legal, technology, and real estate. This project is expected to be a major catalyst for downtown and will fully activate the entry plaza and public spaces associated with the complex. $38 million project is projected to create 642 full-time jobs, including 150 corporate headquarters employees of Prisma, 125 employees with store, restaurant, and several, excuse me, and seven additional significant tenants that are in active due diligence currently could utilize up to an additional 80,000 square feet. Accordingly, the developer and city desire to cooperate in the construction of major public improvements, and whereas the city is committed to the continuing development of its commercial districts and supports opportunities to leverage funds for public improvements adjacent to private redevelopments, and it is believed that the project will make a significant positive economic and community impact in downtown and surrounding areas of Greenville, increase the tax base, and potentially act as a catalyst for further high-quality development within the surrounding area to the benefit of the city and its citizens. Up to $650,000 has been preliminarily approved for potential reimbursement of qualifying public improvements per the recommended ordinance presented to council for consideration this evening. In addition to myself, the city's Director of Engineering Services, Clint Leek, and the developer, Price Cameron, are present and stand ready to join me at the podium to address any questions the council may have regarding the details and merits of the project.
Okay. Mr. DeWorke, you want?
Yeah, I just want to, I would really like to just make a comment about the importance of Prisma Health and the headquarters located here. The return on investment that we're making, well, obviously, we'll get back, you know, more and more and more. But you're right in terms of being a catalyst to economic development, both small businesses and big businesses. But I just want to present a statistic to everyone real quickly on Prisma. And I know that this is the headquarters and they have employees throughout the region, but let me just read some statistics of what this headquarters in downtown Greenville represents. Represents nearly 30,000 team members, 18 acute and specialty hospitals, nearly 3,000 licensed beds, 320 practice sites, and more than 5,400 employed and independent clinicians across its network. To say that this is an economic engine would be an understatement. So I am, I am very supportive of anything we can do to keep them here and happy. Agreed.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. And you may notice some enhancements have been, further enhancements have been made to the streetscape to make it better, better connect to the rest of downtown Greenville, and I think it's all, all good. With that, we have the ordinance. We, did we get a resolution, a motion second? We did, didn't we?
We did.
Yeah, we did before it came up. Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay. All righty. Thank you. 16A.
A resolution to approve the naming of the Africa Plaza exhibit at the Greenville Zoo.
Is there a motion on that, DeWorke?
So moved.
So moved.
Second, we have Bill, I think you're going to make a few comments. You.
So, reminders everybody. I think this project's been on the books for, for quite a while now. It's another example of how successful a public-private partnership can be. We want to obviously thank the donor, and we want to thank the Greenville Zoo Foundation and the Community Foundation for putting this all together. This project was completely funded by private dollars, which was, which was pretty amazing. And I just, I'm very thankful that the city and the donor and everybody supports the zoo and the zoo's conservation outreach, and the fact that we'll continue to do more and more. So having said that, I will turn it over.
State your name and address, please.
For the record. Two relevant points. Dorothy Dow, 221 Cleveland Street, Greenville, South Carolina, 29601. Thank you, Mayor. And to Councilmember DeWorke, and with all due respect, economic development, yes, but healthcare is primary.
Yes, right.
For Prisma. And as someone who's exercised that a lot of late, I did hope to have my family with me today, but unforeseen circumstances have prohibited that. So on behalf of my family, I want to express how honored we are to be able to provide this gift and help make the Greenville Zoo Africa Plaza a reality. This is a project that has been a long time in the making, and there are numerous donors in addition to us who have contributed to the project, all of whom have the gratitude of our family and our city, I'm sure. Hey, where's that picture back? Because I've got some explanation. Can we go back to the picture there? Thank you all. So I asked the city manager to show this picture to help you see who my mother, Mary Hughes, was. She's the one on the right, by the way. This was taken in 1988 when I was 24 years old, the first time my parents came to Mobile, Alabama to meet my husband-to-be, Steve Dow. He's on my page. My mother, Mary Hughes, was an avid conservationist and a lover of all animals, both domestic and in the wild. The Zoo Conservation Fund, which supports species conservation as well as programming and research initiatives, speaks volumes about the importance of the zoo, not just for family entertainment, but for the planet's sustainability. Mom financially supported such initiatives throughout her life, and that is why it is special for us to be able to honor her life with the Mary H. Hughes Africa Plaza. The Greenville Zoo has positively impacted our family's quality of life for over 35 years. And you can go to the video now. That's enough of looking at us as far younger people back in the day. When Steve and I came to Greenville as newlyweds in 1989, having taken new jobs with CRS Serene Engineers, we were initially living in the Colonial Inn Motel on Wade Hampton, next door to the IHOP, along with our three cats while we searched for a home to buy. We had, and it was nice, it was the nicest place we'd ever stayed. We had two weeks off between jobs and spent some of that time exploring Greenville while we looked for a house. One of those explorations was to the Greenville Zoo. At the time, there were two new lion cubs behind glass in a special display just after you entered through the zoo gates. Steve and I instantly fell in love with those cubs and later brought my parents to the zoo on their first visit to Greenville. Our first home in Greenville is the same home we still live in on Cleveland Street, only about a mile from the zoo. We've enjoyed most of our adult life within earshot of vocal animals living at the zoo. We know when they are frisky, we know when they are playing, we know when they are hungry, and that is part of why we have never moved. Our kids were both regular zoo campers, and our daughter's fifth birthday party was celebrated in the zoo. Our entire family has felt connected to the Greenville Zoo, and that is why it is so important to us to financially support this Greenville treasure. On behalf of my family, I want to thank the City of Greenville, the Zoo Foundation Board of Directors, and the many generous donors and patrons of the zoo who collectively support who collectively support not only its operation, but also the conservation work that is an integral of the Greenville Zoo's mission and was so important to my mother, Mary Hughes. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. I have it.
We do need to abstain.
Got to wait until that happens, you know, and one abstention. 16B.
A resolution to provide for certain certifications regarding an abandoned textile mill site located at 100 North Markley Street, according to South Carolina Code annotated Section 12-65-10 at SEC.
So moved.
Second. Just a comment, too, if we have that.
Anybody, anybody have any further questions with him on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Can I make a comment? I don't want to miss the fact. I asked our, I want to be Director Patricia this. So this project, I asked, how much will this project generate for one of our major goals of affordable housing? And through the ATAX accommodations set aside through Act 57, in the time we have left, it's about almost $300,000. So this project, by virtue of having some hotel rooms in it, understanding that the sunset of that act is 2030, generates $300,000 if council so desires to allocate that towards that goal of the city. And I don't, I think that's worth, worth applauding or mentioning.
Yes.
Affordable housing, $300,000. Oh, yes.
Appreciate the in-depth look at this, this, this earlier in the day. Ms. Manager, do you have anything to?
No, sir.
We.
Vote. We got to vote.
Well, now we got to vote.
I already had that. Oh, well, maybe not. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. You're right. Maybe I didn't have it. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Manager?
Yes, sir. I have one presentation this evening.
Okay.
Um, I did want to have an opportunity to bring some information to you on regarding our first responders. We are very fortunate to have great first responder teams here in the city. And we have highlighted the accomplishments of our various teams over the past year, and the accomplishments and successes of those teams are what make Greenville so great. Tonight, we wanted to provide you an update on the public safety and community security. Next slide, please. In the past 10 years, we have grown significantly for a community of our size. Our population has increased by over 12,000 people and two square miles. Next slide. But our crime rate is down 6% over that same time period. Next slide. Our crime numbers have fallen 6% over this time and even more so since 2020, which was one of our highest crime rate years in recent history. And you can see the numbers there in front of you. So how are we doing? In 2024, we are more than halfway through, and we wanted to present our second quarter marks that we received in July. Next slide. At our year-to-date, when you look at the point in time this year in 2024 compared with the same point in time in 2023, we are trending downward in all categories. Next slide. In 2022 was our lowest crime year on record in the past 10 years. 2023 was the second lowest. We are trending lower right now than either 2022 or 2023. I don't want to jinx us. Next slide. We also received questions for crime on both the Swamp Rabbit Trail and in our downtown CBD area. Therefore, we pulled calls for service on this SRT for the past two years. Our trail counters are telling us that we have recorded close to 1.5 million users on the SRT alone, and that was the number as of July. If you'll remember, during our retreat, we expected to have 2 million users. We're going to far surpass that. And this says 25. It's supposed to be 45, but that's okay. There's a typo on that. But of the total 45 calls for service that we received in 2023 and 2024, six required a police report, and three of the six were traffic accidents. So I think it's important as, as we go to talk about the safety of our trail, which is such a wonderful amenity for our community. Next slide. We also decided to see how we were trending in the CBD. Although we are only seven months through the year, we are also on trend to be the lowest of the last five years. I want to thank our public safety employees for all they do to keep us safe. I want to thank our bike police that monitor our trail and our specialized CBD unit that works in downtown. We should thank every member of law enforcement across the upstate for their work to keep us safe. I hope you all and the public will recognize what our public responders do for us and our contributions to public safety. I also want to make sure that you are aware of our 9/11 stair climb on Saturday, September 7th, and that will be with our Greenville Fire Department hosted by the Greenville Drive, and our heroes game between the Greenville Fire Department and the Greenville Police Department on Sunday, September 8th, following the Greenville Drive home game. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
We appreciate that. We, I think we had a good summary last year, and I appreciate the fact we're getting a mid-year update on this because we were all very curious about what the trend lines will really look like. But it's certainly a testimonial to, to a lot of things that are good happening in our community. And it starts, of course, with our very fine police department and our chief and, and all the good efforts of everybody in the police department. We so much appreciate it. And I think it's great because people in Greenville not only can see these statistics, but people kind of feel these statistics, too. Their perception of, of public safety in this town is really second to none. So we appreciate all that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also, you know, we have great first responders with our police, our fire. And also, I know that our Public Works are looking to be named first responders officially across the state of South Carolina, and that's something that's really important to us as well. So, I mean, if you think about when something happens, who, who's really usually first on scene? It's either fire, it's either police, or it's either Public Works.
Right, exactly. Okay, Lily.
I just wanted to announce to the city manager, I want to especially thank the Parks and Recreation Department. Oneida Butler Center had its 50th, 50th anniversary of being open. The staff helped put it together. The very first program director spoke. And several of the others who were there spoke. And we had a lot, we had the first secretary of the community. She, she spoke and gave us the names of everybody who was at the meeting, et cetera. But it was so wonderful, very well attended. We had pitches. We had probably close to 50 or 60 people that were there for the dinner part. They had something all day long. But we just think that the staff went above and beyond. It was just wonderful. We had a whole lot of events that happened in the morning, getting people together. And Prisma was a very integral part of that. So I want to thank them because it was just a wonderful thing. 50 years, ooh, think about it. Anyway, so thank you. So very kind.
Thank you, Councilmember Fleming. And we have a lot coming up in the month of September. So just, everybody at home, keep your eyes out because we have a lot of events coming up over the next six weeks.
Special anniversary. Okay, meeting adjourned.